I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole for August 12th, 2025 at 6:10 PM. Attendance roll call.
All their persons, Wolf?
Here.
Hamel?
Here.
Decker?
Here.
Bryce?
Here.
Schrader?
Here.
Dilgi?
Here.
Madden?
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. Statement of public notice.
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law on Friday, August 8th, 2025.
Approval of the agenda? Approval of the agenda?
Moved to approve.
Second.
All's in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, that passes. Approval of the minutes from the committee of the whole from July 22nd, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. New business. Health insurance presentation by Cunningham and Butler Hello. Thanks for coming out.
Have to turn it on, I think.
It sounds like it might be on. You can just tap it.
How's that? I think it's on, but I might have to hold it. How's this? Okay. Are you all ready? All right. Well, my name is Sandy Motts. I am a benefits consultant with Cunningham and Butler, and I have with me Taylor Orton. Taylor is our Vice President of Employee Benefits in Wisconsin. I've been with Cunningham and Butler for about four years. I work solely with public sector in Wisconsin, helping them with their benefits. Prior to joining CMB, I spent my career over 30 years in public sector HR, so sitting on your side of the table, kind of managing benefit programs. So tonight, the mayor and Kate asked if we would come and talk with you a little bit about what's happening with your medical plan and consider some options. So we want to spend this time. I know from public sector that employee pay and benefits makes up a large part of your budget, so there are big decisions that need to happen in terms of making that fit within your budget. So, I'm going to jump right in, and I thought a good place for us to start tonight would be first understanding where you are currently with your health insurance. So currently, you have about 94 enrolled employees. You have 25 single, 13 limited family, and 56 family, for a total of 94 enrolled. You have approximately 125 employees that are eligible for benefits. 94 of them take the medical plan. Your current monthly premiums are single $995.51, a limited family or an employee plus spouse, employee plus child or children. That premium is currently just under $2,100, and a family premium just under $3,000. The monthly contributions are 12% of the employer premium, so the employees are paying $119.46 for single, $251.51 for limited family, and $355.96 for a family plan. In addition to your expenses, your premium, the city funds what's called a health reimbursement account for employees to help buy down their deductible. So that's an added cost that goes into your medical program as well. Currently, the city funds that at $27.50 a year for a single employee and $5,500 for a limited family or family. There's about a 40% utilization. So how a health reimbursement arrangement works is if employee goes to the doctor and they have a deductible expense, they can use that health reimbursement to offset the amount of their deductible. So the deductible is $3,000, but they get $27.50 in funding from the employer to bring that down to a $250 deductible level. If the employee doesn't need it because they didn't hit their deductible, they didn't have any expenses, that money stays with the city. So it's the city's funding. And you currently have, you're running at about a 40% utilization of that HRA. So when I add that into your total...
One second. If anyone has questions during this, just put your hands up and stop and ask that question if you want clarification. So, you know, it's a discussion. So if you need to, just don't feel free, don't feel like you have to wait until she's done and then try to remember what your question was and ask. So feel free of interrupting and asking questions, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So, on the right-hand side, your total funding is $2.7 million. That's what you are funding. That includes your pay-in lieu benefit. So in addition to the premiums and the health reimbursement arrangement, you offer a cash opt-out to employees. So if employees could enroll in your insurance, but they decide not to, you offer them cash in lieu of taking your medical program. And you have currently 29 employees that are not enrolled, receiving $105.720 in cash in lieu benefit from the city. So in total, your total funding is $2.7 million. The HRA exposure is about $180,000, and the employee contributions are $314,000, bringing your net cost for the medical plan today to just under $2.6 million. Questions on that? Okay?
I got a question. So the net share, or I guess you got it called employer cost share, we're paying roughly almost 90% of the bill, right?
Correct.
So, I'm probably jumping ahead, but just for conversation, to get it out in front of the public, how does that compare to other public sectors?
Yeah, we are going to get to that actually on the next slide.
Okay, now wait.
So, you heard me say that the employee premium is 12%, and the employer premium is 88%, although your total share is about 89 because that's factoring in that HRA as well. So that brings up your percentage a little bit more. Okay? One of the things I do want to note on here too is while you have a very generous pay-in lieu, that cash-in-lie program that we talked about, your participation rate is still higher than we would expect for a generous pay-in lieu. So, let's move on to a little bit of the metrics, and it'll make more sense, I think. So, on this slide...
So, when you're talking pay-in lieu, you're talking, instead of taking the insurance, we're paying you not to take it?
Correct.
Okay, just so it's clarified out there.
Correct. Or if an employee is eligible for family, but they don't take family, they only take single, they still get the difference kind of in premium, if you will, to not take that family plan because it saves the city money by them not taking a family plan. Okay? So on this slide, this is our proprietary metrics that we use to really kind of dive into your plan and identify where there are areas for you to potentially save some money or align closer to benchmark. So the first thing we look at is coverage, and the first item under coverage is your participation rate. And your participation rate says, out of the employees that are eligible to take the insurance, what percentage of employees do. And currently, in 2025, you're running at about a 76.4% participation rate, which compared to the Wisconsin benchmark is 82%. So you're going to see some red and green on the side here, and I want to tell you, red doesn't mean bad and green doesn't mean good. It just simply tells you where there is opportunity. If you were to align to benchmark, what would that potentially save or cost you if you moved? So in this case, with your participation rate, your participation rate is actually lower than the benchmark participation rate. So if you were to move to the benchmark, it would end up costing you about $156,000 if more people started taking your plan. Okay? On the dependent ratio, the dependent ratio is 2.9. That means for every employee that you hire, they bring 1.9 dependents with them to your plan. The public sector benchmark in Wisconsin is 2.64. So this is where I say your opt-out that you're using isn't really working because a lot of municipalities don't offer an opt-out, and their dependent ratio is 2.64. Yours is higher than that benchmark still, even though that you have a very generous opt-out program in place. So again, not good or bad. What we see is that public sector tends to have more dependence on your plan because generally those benefits are richer and employees pay less for premium than they do in the private sector. So, public sector tends to kind of be a magnet to family members to come on to your plan. So it's not unusual. As an example, I think 2.1 is the private sector, because I don't do private sector. 2.1 is about the average dependent ratio in the private sector. So they are paying for less employees on their plan. Okay?
So a quick question, I got this. If you take the two top lines, roughly, we're saving $156, but it's costing us $195,000 to save $156. So there's a $40,000 difference? Is that what I'm seeing?
Well, they're two separate, they're two separate metrics. One is how many people are taking your plan. So if more people started taking your plan and got closer to that Wisconsin public sector benchmark, it would cost you about $156,000. If you were able to get your dependent ratio more in line with public, Wisconsin public sector, you could potentially save $195. Both of them don't need to go together.
Okay, got it.
Okay? All right. Questions on the coverage metric? Okay? The next metric is consumption, and this is really your fully insured premium. And your premium is at $9,017 compared to the Wisconsin public sector benchmark at $8,249. So you are priced a little bit high in comparison. Some of that could be location. So, Wisconsin is one of the most expensive states for healthcare, and depending upon where you are in Wisconsin, that can vary. So if you're in the Madison-Dane County area, cost of healthcare is much less expensive than if you are up north or on the west side of the state. So sometimes geography pays, plays a part in that, and sometimes your claims experience and the amount of claims that you are having is what you're going to pay towards that plan. The last metric, though, is cost sharing. And when we look at cost sharing, we look at both, how do you split the bill when an employee goes to seek services? So how much do they pay? How much does the plan pay? And we also look at, how much of the premium does the employer pay and how much does the employee pay? When you look at the cost share, you're pretty much in line with that Wisconsin public sector benchmark, but your plan is quite a bit more generous than the Wisconsin public sector. Again, not good or bad. We've talked with the mayor about this. This is a metric that Kate and the mayor see from us regularly, and what we tell people again is, red doesn't mean bad, and it doesn't mean you should align closer to benchmark, but it gives you some dollars to say, how much is that costing us being more generous than benchmark? And so sometimes municipalities say, this is strategic. We know it's costing us more, but we do it because we need to do it to help with recruitment and retention. And if that's the case, then that's a good strategy to have. Maybe you need to look at, is it still the right strategy? Or if maybe we aligned to benchmark, maybe we could afford to pay our employees a little bit better. And so it's kind of that mix between both your benefits and the pay for employees that you need to use for your recruitment and retention strategy. So what it tells us, though, is it tells us a little bit about your plan, and when your plan is generous, we're going to talk a little bit more about what are some of the consequences sometimes when you have too generous of a plan. Questions on the metrics? Okay. All right. Next, I want to talk a little bit about medical plan. How do you buy insurance? So there's a medical plan, a funding continuum, and you can be anywhere from fully insured, and you're just slightly to the right of that fully insured. You are using a strategy called an HRA buy-down. It's what I talked about before, is you're buying a higher deductible from the insurance carrier, but to the employee, it looks like a lower deductible because you are funding some of that deductible for the employee. So the employee's single deductible is really only $250, but on paper, it looks like it's $3,000. So when you go to the carrier, if you buy a $3,000 deductible plan, that's going to cost you less than if you only bought a $250 deductible plan, right? Because on a $3,000 deductible plan, the employee is going to pay more before the insurance carrier is going to start to pay. If you only bought a $250 deductible plan, the insurance carrier is going to start to pay at $251, so a lot more exposure to the carrier. So what the city currently does is they buy a higher deductible plan from the carrier. So to the carrier, it looks like a $3,000 deductible plan, and then they fund $2,750 in a health reimbursement arrangement for the employee so that the deductible to the employee is only $250. Does that make sense? Okay. So as we move to the right on the continuum, of course, buying fully insured, right? Yeah, that's the most insurance, and buying less insurance would take you all the way over to the continuum to being self-funded. And then there's some options kind of in-between. And what we want to talk about today is, we want to explore a little bit further for you, what are some of the options and sort of the opportunities and considerations under those other options? Okay? All right. So we're going to start with self-funding. Since that's on the far opposite, we like when our clients actually buy less insurance because we think that that gives you more control and helps you actually save the most money. So if you were self-funded, what is a self-insured plan? A self-insured plan is basically, instead of paying a monthly premium to a carrier who makes profit by the premium that they charge you, you hire and you process, you hire someone to process claims and be your pharmacy benefit manager to review and pay your claims, and the city then just pays those claims then as those are incurred. And if nobody had any claims, you wouldn't pay anything. So, that's not going to happen, but let's just talk about in a fully insured. If you had nobody ever go to the doctor that has your health insurance, you would have paid a whole bunch of money to your carrier for nobody to seek care. You might as well just kind of stand by the $12,000 down, right? Because that money would be going nowhere. If you were self-funded and you had nobody go to the doctor, you wouldn't have paid anything other than some, you'd still pay some administrative fees and stuff for them to manage claims, and you would have some fixed costs, but you wouldn't pay anything because there were no claims. So it gives the city a little bit more ability to control the claims, and you are actually then buying some stop loss to protect you in case you have a catastrophic claim. In a nutshell, that's kind of what happens when you go self-funded.
Should also be pointed out that if everyone goes to the doctor and...
Correct.
Completely utilizes it, we're paying all of those versus just the premium.
Correct. And so we are going to talk about on the other side, right? And that's why you buy stop-loss protection. So what are the components first? Let's talk about if you are self-funded. First is, you have a third-party administrator that's going to adjudicate claims. So they are going to process those claims for you. You don't want your staff processing claims. They're not medical experts, right? They're not interpreting plan documents and stuff. So you are going to hire a third-party administrator to actually administer those claims for you. You also are going to hire a pharmacy benefit manager that's going to manage the prescription program. You're going to buy stop loss, both what's called specific and aggregate stop loss, and we're going to talk about that in a minute. And you also already have a partnership with us as the broker consultant partner with you, but you would rely probably more on us in a self-insured environment than a fully insured environment because there's some more reporting, there's some levers that you can do, partnerships that need to happen, and kind of managing and helping you manage that TPA and that pharmacy benefit manager. All right. So let's talk about stop loss. So there's two types of stop loss. One is a specific stop loss and one is aggregate. Specific stop loss says if you have a catastrophic event, let's say a premature baby, and that event is going to be $2 million for the child, you're going to have a stop loss typically about 30%. For Mesquita, we would recommend a minimum probably $50,000 specific stop loss, which means once that claim hits $50,000, then the reinsurer is going to pay for anything over $50,000. The city isn't going to pay $2 million for that premature baby. You're going to have some stop loss protection. So specific is an amount that you will pay for one individual as a stop to protect you from a high-cost claim. Aggregate stop loss is if you have multiple members on your plan having a bad year and having very high-cost claims. There's going to be a total aggregate stop loss, typically 125%, and they're going to stop at that level. So if you had, aggregate actually is much less likely that you would hit than a specific stop loss, but you're going to have that protection as well that if you had several members that were having high-cost claims, surgeries and a lot of claims, you're going to have protection by hitting an aggregate reinsurance as well. Okay? Does that make sense? So why would you look at self-funding? So the opportunities when you're self-funded is, there's minimal provider and medication disruption for employees. You can have a broad network. You can kind of control where employees can go, what's available for them in terms of network, and there would be little disruption to them. It provides more savings over the long term for you. So generally speaking, savings over a five-year horizon will be about 5% to 8%. You will have a year, though, that you would probably pay more than if you were fully insured, somewhere in probably a 20-year period. Savings from reduced carrier profits and state taxes. So, part of being fully insured, as carriers like to make money, if you're self-funded, there's no profit. You're only paying for the claims that are actually incurred. There's greater flexibility for you to implement programs and control costs. It allows for potential partnerships. So we have talked about, the school district here has a clinic for their employees. This would allow for the city to align and maybe partner with the school district for employees to be able to utilize that clinic. It also allows for access to data. So you don't get much data, claims data, and information about what's happening on your plan when you're fully insured. When you're self-funded, Kate will have that information. So what it allows us to do is say, the pharmacy spend's really high. Maybe the example is you have a lot of employees taking specialty medications. Maybe we need to have more of an aggressive formulary with the pharmacy plan. So it allows us to really target what's happening, put things in place. I'll give you a good example. When I was with Appleton, we had high emergency room utilization, and we knew that they were non-emergent things because the costs were pretty low for going to the emergency rooms. So we started digging in about why were emergency rooms. And we found out, no offense to the officers in the room, that our police officers were the biggest users of the emergency room. Why? Because they're comfortable. They take people there all the time. They take victims there. They take bad guys there. They're comfortable. They have a relationship with some of the staff in the ER, and so it's just convenient for them, and they know the staff there. And many of them didn't have a primary care physician. So for minor things, they were going to the ER as like their primary care physician. So we did an education. We kind of sat them down and said, look, one, that's not the most convenient place for you to be. If you're sitting there with a child with an ear infection at 3:00 in the morning, you are not going to be top priority to get back to see one of the physicians, so you're going to sit there longer. And on top of it, here's the average cost of that visit if you go to the ER versus if you like went to urgent care or your own primary care physician. So we actually did some education, and employees really tried to help us with that. And then we put some, like, out in. We put a little bit of plan design change in that made it hurt a little bit more financially if you used the emergency room when it wasn't truly an emergency. There are lots of opportunities when you're self-funded to kind of do those things, to kind of see what's driving the cost, and to be able to implement programs to plug and play with vendors to help you control that. The other thing I want to talk about, there are some, I guess, some cautions, I guess, or some considerations if you're self-funded. It can be more volatile than fully insured. There is going to be a year where you could have some high-cost claimants, and your self-funded plan might cost you more. So there's a little bit more volatility. You have to ensure, you have to build a self-insured fund, and so sometimes that can take a little while for you to build up that fund as a reserve. You have to get competitive stop-loss quotes, and it requires more oversight by the city. In order to really manage it and be effective, Kate would have to be more involved in like, what are the triggers? Where are those areas of spend under the plan that we need to focus on? From a timeline perspective, if the city were to go self-funded and move from fully insured, really, we would need to know by the beginning of October that this is the direction you want to go. And then we have a number of things that have to happen. We have to find a pharmacy benefit manager. We have to find a third-party administrator. We have to get stop-loss quotes. There's a lot of things that we would need to do before we went into open enrollment so that employees would have their cards by January 1 and be ready with new insurance. Okay. Questions on self-funding before I move on? All right. Next, I'm going to talk about fully insured. Fully insured is where you are today with that HRA buy-down. If you stayed fully insured, especially with your current carrier partner, there would be little to no disruption for employees. It's a broad network. Employees know what's expected of them. They've been with the plan now since 2023, so it really would be, you know, just stay the course. You have a solid carrier partnership with GHT. This year, you got a 9.5% renewal. You were probably deserving of an 18% based on your claims. We were able to work with them. They released the renewal at 12%. We were able to work with them to leverage a 9.5, and then ultimately, the city made a plan design change which brought the renewal down to 8.5. GHT is part of the Wisconsin Counties Association. They only write public sector groups, and so they operate in a trust similar to like being at the state plan ETF. And so they have a trust, and you're kind of sharing that insurance pooling with other public sector members, which helps GHT to try and kind of like keep those renewals at a more reasonable rate. So they've been a great carrier partner with you, and currently, with being fully insured and with self-funded, you have the ability for both CMB and your HR team to support employees. If they have questions, if claims have been denied and those things aren't happening, we are able to get to those partners and vendor partners to help employees work through those issues. And I know Kate sends me, she handles them, and when like she's not getting a response, then Kate will send it to us, and we will kind of escalate it so that we can help members kind of work through that. On the downside of fully insured is you have increasing costs to the city. You've had some high-cost claimants on your plan. That's what drove the 9.5% renewal for this year. And we just received today that the city's renewal, if you stay with GHT, would be 9.5% for next year as well. The offset, to offset increasing costs, you could charge employees more. You could change the plan design, but then that's disruptive to employees, and you're kind of balancing that increase then on the backs of employees. And you have no ability to adjust. There's no flexibility with a fully insured plan. You're buying a product. This is what the plan is. You can't plug and play. You can't do things with your pharmacy, whatever their formulary is. That's the formulary that you need to use.
So, so that 9.5% is of $2.7 million? Is that what it was?
Yeah. I'm going to go through some numbers with you on each of these plan options as soon as we get through the considerations of the different types of plans. So lastly, as a public sector entity here, I want to talk with you about the Department of Employee Trust Funds, ETF. They are also a fully insured plan for you. You pay a premium to them, and similar to group health trusts that you're with now, they are pooled with public sector employers that are in the ETF. And so the ETF would be an option for you as well. That is not an option for private sector. And so if you went to the ETF, some opportunities for you would be, you're part of a larger risk-sharing pool. There's stability in rates, so you don't see as much in terms of rate fluctuations, and it's fully insured. You pay a set premium. There are, though, some downsides to if you go to the ETF. So, one is ETF would likely, based on your claims experience and some of the high-cost claimants, you would have to go through underwriting. And I believe that's a $3,000 fee for you to go through the underwriting with the state. And then if they assess you with a surcharge, you would pay a max surcharge in year one. In year two, then they drop the surcharge to a 50% surcharge, and then in year three, the surcharge goes away, and you're in, and you pay the same rates then in your area under ETF. So you're most likely going to get hit with some additional funding in the first two years of the ETF plan. The ETF has had double-digit increases over the last three years, more than what the city has seen in increases in the last three years. They have a very narrow network, so really what employees are going from a broad network, employees would be going to an HMO, which means the employee would be restricted. There would be likely some disruption for employees in terms of their care paths that they're on currently. There's no employee plus one tier at the state. It's only a single or a family. So you have a limited family tier premium right now. So employees, if you're a single mom with a child or two children, you get a break on your premium compared to the family rate. If you're an employee with just a spouse, you get a break. You only pay the employee plus one or the limited family premium. Here at the state, you would all be families. So you're either a employee only, or you're a family plan under the state, which is going to drive some of the premium contributions for employees up. There would be an increased deductible and out-of-pocket exposure for employees. There's no ability for Kate and HR or for us to really help employees. Everything is handled through the state, so they have to go through the state in terms of any questions that they have about denied claims or questions on any kind of services or anything with their medical plan has to go through the state. If employees didn't select tier one, so for your area here in Waukesha County, the tier one plan is Network Health Plan, which means any employee who is not seeing Network Health Plan providers now would be faced with the decision to either change their providers in their care path to Network Health Plan physician. in their care path to Network Health Plan physicians, or they would have to pick a non-Tier 1 plan. And the non-Tier 1 plans get very expensive and would be like two to three times more than what employees are paying currently for premiums. All right, I'm going to pause there. Questions on ETF?
I have a question. It's not necessarily on ETF. You said, based on our claims, we should have probably been assessed like 18%. And then it came in at 12, got it down to nine, and then eight and a half. And then, did you just say our next year's percentage would be nine and a half?
Correct.
So you were expecting a much larger?
I was expecting a much larger. They are being kind to you as well, again, at the trust for this next year. So they are kind of watching. You are a pretty small group, so you have some high-cost claimants on your group. So you have 94 enrolled. If you have a few high-cost claimants on that plan, it's very different than if you're a employer of 200 employees and has, let's say, 600 people covered on the plan. A couple of high-cost claimants isn't going to get that plan upside down. You're a little bit smaller, so having a few high-cost claimants can really drive the spend up for a group of your size, and that's kind of what's happening the last couple of years. So I came on to this group at the end of 2022, and we negotiated your 23 renewal. You were with WPS before you had a broker partner, and we were able to offer you a flat change from your current WPS plan, matching the plan benefit to go into 2023. You would have gotten partway through that year, I think it was an 8% increase from WPS. So you had a flat rate. And then the second year, we were your broker partner, we were able to negotiate a 10% rate decrease. What that told us is your rates have been, you were paying too much under WPS based on your claims. And so we were able to use our analytics team to actually drive that renewal and get the carrier to drop that 10%. Then you started to have some high-cost claimants hit the plan, and some of those high-cost claimants then are impacting your claim and what's called your loss ratio. So loss ratio is a carrier wants to see your loss ratio at 80% or less. That is the ratio of the claims that are being paid out compared to the premium that you pay the carrier. They want that at 80% or less because it gives them a 20% profit margin, 20% to pay their employees, keep the lights on and make some profit. So your loss ratio in 2023 was 73%. In 2024, it was 142%. And through June of this year, you're at 138% loss ratio. Carriers don't like to see that because that means they're paying out more than they're taking in in premium. But again, because you're with WCA Group Health Trust, they're splitting some of that across the fund, and so they're trying to give you a little bit, and they have some reserve. They're being kinder to you than probably another carrier would be with your renewal. So nine and a half is a gift. We call that, I joke with the carrier partner, she tells me it's a Sandy special, because I call her and say, look, the city cannot afford this. There's no way they can pay. There is no way they can pay a 12% increase. Can we get this down below 10? What can we do? And so then I use some data points to make with them and provide them some analytics. And she'll come back and say, okay, I'm going to give you a Sandy special. It's a blue light special, 9.5%. That's the best we can do. So that's where you are. I don't think I'm going to be able to work any more magic with them for next year below 9.5 because of how your claims are running. Okay? Does that make sense? All right. So let's look at some numbers, because you guys want to know. Uh-oh. Let's look at some numbers. If you remain fully insured, you're currently at your net cost of just under 2.6 million. With a 9.5% increase, you'd be at about 2.8 million for next year. And then assuming GHT is not as kind in the second year in 2027, and you got a 15%, you'd be at just under 3.2 million if you stay the course with GHT fully insured. If you move self-funded, the estimated net cost for next year would be 2.3 million. And how we did this is we did a retro funded analysis, and we looked at had you been self-funded, we know what you paid in premiums. We looked at if you had been self-funded and accounted for, we had to make some assumptions about the stop-loss that you would pick, how much the stop-loss, how much the admin rates would be. We were able to show that you would have likely saved money over the last couple of years being self-funded. That is contingent, though, upon us being able to get competitive stop-loss quotes. And it assumes that when we identified what's going on with your plan with some of the high-cost claimants, we would have done some things to make sure that those didn't continue to be high-cost claimants moving forward. Okay?
So how confident is estimated net cost?
Well, I can't predict the future yet. I try. But, you know, how confident are we? I'm confident in what the analytics team has done, but we don't know, none of us know in this room, right? You have a couple of high-cost claimants. You could have another high-cost claimant tomorrow. And so the next year could be a bad year until we got our arms around like what that high-cost claimant was. Was it because specialty medications? And then we might want to try a more aggressive pharmacy plan. Like, there would be things that we would do then to address that as soon as we knew about it. So...
Are you talking 2026 or 2027?
I'm checking 2026.
Okay, just checking.
Yeah.
No, I think that's probably it, I guess. Yeah, that's good. That's good.
Okay.
With the self-insured option, you said your stop-loss insurance...
If they have to get a competitive...
Right. The aggregate would be 125%, but that would be not likely to hit even with the high-cost claimants, because they would...
The high-cost claimants are going to hit a specific stop-loss. So let's say your specific stop-loss is 50,000. If you have a high-cost claimant that hits 75,000, city's going to be on the hook for the first 50. The stop-loss carrier then, and the reinsurer is going to be on the hook for anything over the 50. The aggregate stop-loss comes in if you have multiple members that are on your plan that are having surgeries, premature babies, whatever it might be, and you total all of those claims together, then there's an aggregate stop-loss above that. So there's the specific for each individual that provides that protection. But then there's if you had multiple high-cost claimants, right, hit the plan, then that aggregate stop-loss is going to total up to, there's going to provide you a layer of protection once you hit that amount, and then the aggregate reinsure would pay after that.
And then what is the added cost of carrying that insurance?
I don't have, I didn't bring this. Oh, here.
I thought you had a percentage up there on your chart, didn't you?
It's within the net cost that's up there. The stop-loss insurance is basically the net cost. The question...
I think the big thing that's contingent, right? So within that 2.3 million, you probably have, let's see, what is the number here, Sandy? Oh, we'll call it half a million dollars, just for easy figures. 600,000 of the 2.3 million is stop-loss insurance. So the question, the big contingent part, is that's assuming you get a market, what we'd say a market competitive number. So we go to insurance companies, and we say, hey, we want to buy this stop-loss from you for this group of 94 folks and all the families that are on the plan. We would expect the market average rate for a company or an organization of your size to be around 600,000. The contingent part is if they come back and they say, hey, we did our underwriting, and we see these couple people that we think are going to be, you know, inordinately expensive relative to what we normally would expect, we aren't going to charge you 600, we're going to charge you 900. That's where the contingent part comes in, in the first year, is if they have a risk that is different than average, then they're going to rate you for it. And so that's part of the kind of the wild part of this is we have, until you go and get quotes, until you get the details, it's really hard to say, hey, are you going to get a market competitive number? Because if you have one extra-large claimant, then normal, to Sandy's point, you won't get $600,000. And so that's the work that we have to go do. And then what we try to do is we try to set people up for win-win scenarios to maybe help those folks find other options, like available voluntary choices. And we're going to talk about a couple of those options of how we try to help those large claimants find maybe some other wins that are available to them in their life. So that's the contingent part.
Well, I do remember what else I was going to go ask is, as far as the estimate, what is your timeline to know the actual dollar amount? First of all, we'd have to say we want to do this, right? So your timeline would be before October?
So we would like the decision to be behind the concept of self-funding from the council. You would get preliminary numbers in the month of October. And then we would have a pretty good idea of if it's going to work or if it's not going to in the month of October. But you would want to have the backing to say, hey, if the numbers are competitive, yes, we're willing to go that direction. Kind of like a tentative plan. And then the GHT offer, I'd say, is Plan B, if you will. So kind of a direction of, hey, our Plan A is self-insurance. But let's say the contingent stop-loss stinks, and there's no way around it, that we have a Plan B ready to go. Does that make sense?
Is that Plan B the 9.5% increase?
Yes. So Plan B would be 9.5 plus what other strategies you want to talk about. So the 9.5 assumes you change nothing about your plan, right? And I would say there's two probably levers you have available within that plan. One, you buy the $3,000 deductible from GHT today. You could go buy a 5,000, get a premium relief, and increase that health reimbursement account. So today, it's 27.50. You could increase it to 47.50, and you get a little bit of arbitrage because the carrier gives you more rate relief than you pay in HRA or those deductible buy-down expenses. That's one lever that we have available. The other lever, which is a trickier one I don't love talking about, especially with a bunch of employees listening, is you guys have a very generous plan today, right? And I think you asked the question, sir, of how competitive is your plan earlier? Your guys' plan is if I go to the doctor, if I go to pick up medications, your plan will pick up 95 cents on the dollar for every claim I have. And I'm picking up 5 cents through my deductibles, my copays, my co-insurance. The Wisconsin public sector average is 86 cents on the dollar. That's just you're being more generous as a community than some other public sector employers. That's a lever. I'm not saying you have to use it, but those are kind of the two other levers within the GHT program.
But technically, we do nothing, and we, we're going to roughly compare to your estimates on the second one, there is $500,000 difference within a year. And you're saying there might be some flexibility to pull that number down if we stay with what we're doing with a few changes?
Yep.
Okay, got it.
So on the, your estimate, the question of, you know, how sure have you of that $2.3 million expenditure? With the stopwatch, let's just say we, you were off, and we were at 125% of that. Let's just say 140% of that. If we're at 140% of it, we have a stop-loss at 125. So we're really limited it at 125% of that number of costs for claims, correct?
So there's two pieces to that, Mayor. So within the 2.3, remember, you have two kinds of, if you were to break down the expenses, of the 2.3 million, 600, let's call it insurance costs, so it's the fixed cost of the stop-loss. The remaining, call it 1.7 million, is variable claims. So those are, the first stop-loss that matters is the 600 grand fixed cost. That is one where an insurance company can say, I'm not going to protect, that's for the large claimants. So Sandy mentioned, you're buying one kind of stop-loss, it's the expensive kind, for the big claimants, the single big claimants. And so for 600 grand, for that insurance, what you get is you get every single person that's on the health plan for the city has a limit of 50K. The insurance company takes everything over that. But an insurance company could say, boy, you already have some large claimants, we're going to charge you 900,000 instead of 600. So that's an extra 300,000 on top of that number. Then you have the other side, which is the 125%. That's the aggregate insurance. It's really cheap. It's like $10 per person. There's barely any expense to it. And what that protects you from is that 1.7 million, not the fixed cost, the variable costs, they say, hey, we're going to cap you at 125% of that number. So if you think of 25% on top of 1.7 million, probably talking just a hair over 400,000 bucks, 425,000. And so if you were to think about, well, how serious is that number, Taylor? If you hit the aggregate, I'd add $425,000 to that number. So you're at, call it 2.7 million. And then the big question from our vantage point that would stop you from self-funding is the specific insurance, which is that 50,000, that $50,000 insurance. If they don't charge you 600, if they charge you 900, well, now we're at about 3 million bucks of total worst-case scenario, right? Which, again, compared to fully insured, it's only $200,000 more, but it is a risk for the city, right? And so I think if you guys took anything away from all of that, is I would say the big contingent piece is can we get that $50,000 insurance for anywhere near $600,000?
But saying you do?
Yep.
Then, if you did, if we get it at 600 grand, which is a market competitive rate, that 2.3 number, worst-case scenario, is about $425,000 worse. Which is still cheaper than next year's renewal.
You got it.
GHT is my point.
Yep.
And we would know where you are in that $600,000 number before we actually...
Correct.
Fully...
We would know the worst-case scenario by October. And to that point, Mayor, it's like when, and the risk of hitting 25% over is one in 20 years statistically.
So that's my last, well, last question right now. You guys data mine everything. You're able to tell us where we are and compared to every benchmark out there. You guys predict, you know, if you go self-insured, you guys predict, okay, here's your cost. You did it for us. You're predicting 2.314, blah, blah, blah. What's your five-year average on percent? How correct are you?
Yeah. So this is a good question. So what you guys will experience is we are going to be within a five percentage point of margin over the five year, if you add the five years together. What I would tell you is normal, somebody asked the question, how volatile is it normally? Self-funding will go up and down 10% year-over-year, but over the course of five years, you will spend 5% to 8% less than fully insured, is typically how it works over a good deal. And so the worst case you typically have is about 10%. It normally stays within a 10% bound, but I would tell you that we are, every year, we are normally going to be within the 5% mark, even in a bad year. Because again, if you guys have two bad claimants, let's say, a group of your size normally has two to three large, large claimants. But let's say you have five. Well, that's only an extra $100,000 because you're only taking $50,000 of retention, right? And so that's 100 grand on a $2 million budget. It's five percentage points. So that's where you're going to get the volatility. So it's a long-winded answer, but if you were in a bad year, our clients in bad years run 10% high. And one in 20-year chance of hitting that 25% max. Possible, yes. Probable, no.
One more question. You said we'd have to hire somebody to manage claims. We'd have to hire a pharmacy benefits manager. Is that, what does that cost? Is that cost baked into that 2.3 already as well?
It's all baked in there. So yeah, all the expenses associated with a self-insured plan are baked in there.
Well, the person we're hiring is through you guys, right? You kind of manage that?
We find them. We hire them. We implement them along with the city.
Right. It's not like we're hiring an employee.
Correct.
Okay, gotcha.
Yep.
And typically, a lot of these third-party administrators are like UnitedHealth. So they get like a UnitedHealth card. They don't really, you know, we're the bank behind it essentially when you go self-insured.
Yep. Yep. So we find them all, hire them for you, manage them, implement them, and your employees won't know any different, other than the ID card will say something different.
Hold on a minute. Did you have a question?
I was just going to ask about if we stayed with the plan we're at with the 9.5 and did some tweaks to that, can we see some numbers of what that would look like?
And we can show it both ways. I think there's ways that have zero employee impact, and there are ways that have employee impact both ways, and that's a choice for the city.
Yeah, and I would encourage that, but also at the same time, those same changes show the impact on a fully insured, I mean, a self-insured plan. Because that's going to adjust, whatever changes we do on that's going to adjust that as well.
Correct, yes.[1714.74] Correct, yes. If you increase your, so your employee facing deductible today is $250, if you move that to 500, whether you're self-insured or with group health trust, they're both going to go down.
So if we stayed where we're at and like I said, made some tweaks and then maybe re-looked at this next year, you don't, typically your numbers are going to stay within 5% to 10% anyway for this, so it's something that we could actually re-look at next year and we're probably going to be looking at the same scenario, plus or minus a little bit.
Correct. Yeah, the biggest thing in self-funding is, and I might, you know, sound like I'm beating a dead horse here, right, is the contingent stop losses. If you wait, you know, if you have a year and let's say maybe somebody unfortunately comes up with a new, you know, high condition or something like that, when you go to quote stop loss next year, that obviously can affect you then, just on the timing side. Conversely, maybe one of your large claimants gets better and that helps you on the stop loss.
Well, that was going to be my next question. So on the self-funded, if we do have a bad year, then we're going to go up anyway. We're going to go up at least 10% in the self-funded if we have a bad year. And potentially, you said it could be more, I mean, not typical scenario, but either way, if we have a bad year, it's going to be bad no matter what plan we're on. It's going to be.
Yep. I always think of, if you're going to go self-funded or whatever you do, think of it in five-year pictures, not one-year pictures. Because one year, you could move self-funded and say, oh my gosh, that was worse than going fully insured, but the reality is the next year, the insurance company rates you up for what happened in the prior year. And insurance normally never goes down when you're fully insured versus if you're self-insured, it cleans up, you get all the benefit when that happens. And so I think we're big proponents of looking at your decisions in five-year vacuums, and Sandy said it, in a five-year window, you will have one year where self-insurance will cost you more than being fully insured. I can almost promise you that, but the other four will be better. And in aggregate, you will come out ahead, just because you are, the biggest thing is you're removing carrier profit from 70% of your insurance claims. And that's where all the savings comes from.
Plus, the last couple of years, you guys went to bat and pulled down the rates and it looks like you said, what, 138% in six months of this year? I remember, because that was a number you used, I believe. So that means we're going to be 200, 250, 300% this year on that, on the claim. So that's only going to ensure that our costs are going to go up for the following year. And if that rate continues, it's even going to be higher. So if you play, you know, if you want to go play the slot machine, you're better off not playing on that slot machine, you're better off playing on the second one than the first one, just because of the percentage that you guys gave us on, on where we are in six months versus what we were last year and the year before. So I think, what did you say, it was like under 100%? It was 150%? And now we're at 150% for six months, so.
Well, it's 156, so through six months, it's total premium through six months and total claims through six months. I wouldn't double it, it's about as, it's about where it was last year, which is still obviously not in the advantage for the carrier, but it's, it's, it's going to be around 140 both years back to back.
Oh, okay, so that's not.
Yeah, it won't double in the 200s.
I thought you said for the, for six months, it sounds like we're going to be, okay.
Yep, about 140 is where it's trending for the whole year.
Okay, got it.
But still the same, I think, concept.
I have another question too. Is this, I know you're talking about with the self-funded combining with the school, and is that something where we would use the same location, same facilities, we would just have to add an administrator? We wouldn't have to have another location for the city? We wouldn't have to have any other clinics or any other costs involved? We would just be going wherever those employees are currently going? We don't need another spot?
Yeah, the biggest, I think the thing that we've talked about with the district is mainly the clinic, is what we would share to start. The rest of the stuff you would buy independently. So the third-party administrator, the pharmacy benefit manager, all those things, you would have your own contracts and your own setup and they would administer your claims on their own. What you would share is the clinic, which is the clinic location, because those, whenever you have a clinic, volume's the biggest thing and they could bring more practitioners there and be available more hours if they have more bodies.
Well, and that's my thought, if all of a sudden there's 94 more people and all of a sudden they're like, well, this is too many people for our clinic, you're going to need your own clinic, you're going to need your own location. I can see that coming down as another expense eventually for the city and then we're saving nothing.
So, so these numbers don't include using a clinic right now at all?
These do not include the clinic. However, I would say the clinic, our goal would be that if you invested in a clinic, you would pay a fixed cost for the clinic, but it would come out of the claims. And so you'd want to positive, what I would say is, I don't think you guys, for how big the district is, the district doesn't have enough people. Plus, if you added the city, it's not going to make them outgrow the space. If anything, I think the biggest thing is maybe they add a practitioner. But from a space standpoint, they are not, they don't have enough volume.
And what does that cost, adding another practitioner? That would probably be at least 100-plus thousand adding on to the.
Yeah, I don't know the comp model that they reimburse on. Typically, they're, you're paying a per employee or a per member per month access fee, and if they add an extra practitioner, they are not adding costs because they're adding, you're, they're going to get your 300 bodies that are going to give them extra revenue. And because of that extra revenue, they're going to use that to get an extra practitioner. And so typically, it wouldn't be an added expense, I'd say.
I think it's not added expense. The idea would be if someone uses the clinic, that is less expensive than if they went to a doctor in the system. So let's say I have a ear infection or a sinus infection, right? If I can go to the clinic instead of going to the doctor, what you are going to pay all in for that visit at the clinic for the employee is much less than if they went in the system. So it's not added cost in a self-funded, it would be added cost if you're fully insured because you're paying a set premium and then you're going to pay for those services at the clinic. But if you're self-funded, it's your treating at the clinic instead of over here. So instead of showing up in claims, it's going to show up in the clinic expense.
And again, I want to reiterate that these numbers you're using are assuming we don't have a clinic.
Correct.
Right, right. And with your experience, as long as we're on this clinic thing, have you set up other cities? I mean, I know other places and they share it with fire departments, police departments and so on, so you've done that, right?
Yep, I have two clinic, I have two county clients that have clinics. One is set up, they pay a flat per member per month fee for the use of the clinic and the other one, they pay, it's a fee for service. So the employee goes there, costs the employee nothing, everything gets billed to the municipality and the municipality pays that claim. And as much as it's expensive to get the care done there, employees love it because not only is it free to them, but they are in and out. So if I want to get in because I'm not feeling well, I can make an appointment and because it's not run like a regular system, you can get in and out and back to work, get your medication and be feeling better in no time. They love the clinic. When I was in Appleton, we added a clinic that was shared jointly with the school district. My employees would say it was the best benefit we offered them in a long time.
And that's what I heard. I mean, I've even heard that some of them were like a $10 pay when they go and that's it, you know? So free $10, there's not much difference really, but I've heard the same thing. But so I think that in the long run, that's something, I mean, it's, it exists with the school, we've talked generally about that as a council a little bit, but I think that's a direction that if we go with, like, what do you call it, self-funded, that's something that would definitely be something in the future, if not immediate.
I would agree. I just, I just wanted to point out that the numbers are assuming we didn't do that. Adding a clinic just makes those numbers cheaper.
And I think adding people to it would, it would only benefit the clinic, you know? So I mean, like you said, if there's, I don't know how, how much the school district has, you know how many people there are, and we're going to add another 100 to that.
It's, I mean, they, we have 100 employees, they have 500 employees, I mean.
So it would probably, it would probably be a benefit to make theirs a little bit bigger at, at that point, I would think. But I don't know, I don't know the business that well.
So I did talk to some of the people that are using it now and they do like it, the people at the high school like it, but the people at the other schools, it's not as convenient, obviously, for them because the location is at the high school. It does have limited hours, so, you know, obviously you're still going to have to go to urgent cares or hospitals if it's after their hours, their hours are not, they're not open.
But if it's a free benefit, some people might wait till the next day and that's part of the savings, you know what I mean? If it's not an emergency, emergency, right?
They might. And like I said, my fear is having to add the cost of another clinic unless we're going to put it somewhere in this building, which we could probably find some space in here.
I think we want to keep it together where all the farm, where all the doctors are or whatever, the medical people are.
Alderman, brace.
So as a former employee of the school district, the clinic was a really nice benefit to use and I was not stationed at the high school. I was at the, and it's, it's pretty convenient, like you could just call, they have a lot of same-day appointments, they have a lot of, or like next day, if you could wait like a day or two to get in. I think they are open like four days a week. There are late hours, there are a few early hours that they offer. And if they were to add another practitioner and that space is very large, it would actually just open up the schedule for even like their 500 employees to have more scheduled time to get in. And it was a really nice, it is a very, very nice benefit. And it would be really, if, like, we could do that partnership, that I feel would be very nice for the same place.
And I don't want to beat a dead horse, but the clinic part is really down the line. However, if we were to add, like, go that route and then decide we wanted to partner with the clinic, their hours are based on how many people they have using it. So us doing that would expand their hours more than likely because they're not open all the time because they're open, they're, they're doing best fit. It's almost like just-in-time inventory, you know, they, it's geared towards their demand.
Well, not all, not all clinics are over 24 hours either.
Right.
I mean, a lot of them are just basic hours, you know?
Well, what I was gathering is for like spouses and stuff that aren't, that they work another job and then they would need the clinic after their hours, it wasn't as convenient for somebody who has to work a regular job, their hours weren't so good for, like, the husband when the wife was the teacher, you know what I mean? It was a little more of a challenge.
Sure.
For them.
Yeah, that would make sense.
Because the limited hours and days open and whatnot. But let's face it, no matter when you're sick, it, you got to wait to get in your doctor. I mean, you don't always get in the next day unless you go to an urgent care or an ER.
So I did want to talk a little bit about ETF as well. You'll see some numbers that we put up there for estimated net costs. I assumed these costs are based off of the 2026 rates for the local deductible plan, which is a $500,000 deductible. So that would be an increase in deductible from what the employees have today and it has an annual out-of-pocket limit of $9,218.4. That's the current plan design. I'm not sure if that's going to stay the same for 2026. And assuming that the city would be charged the max surcharge in year one and 50% of that in year two, you can see what we would be looking at if you wanted to make a move to the ETF. So you're looking at about $3.1 million first year, assuming you get max surcharge, and in year two, about 2.8.
And again, we're going to go back to your experience. What about 2028, 29, 30, does that, is that going to be better for us?
Yes, so then the surcharge would come off and you would drop down to what the regular ETF rate would be in year three, but I can tell you the last three years. So since I've been in your account, we were hired in fall of 2022. I mentioned 2023, you got a flat renewal, the next year you got a 10% decrease and then you got a 9.5% increase for this year. The ETF plan has had double-digit increases all of those last three years, so much higher than what you have seen in increases with your fully insured carrier. It used to be, because that was a large group, we've had a lot of smaller employers that have left the ETF because it's restrictive. It's a great plan if it works for you. So if you are an employee in the valley and you're a small employer, ETF can work pretty well because you have ThetaCare, you have Network Health, you have Aurora there, so as long as you don't treat at Aurora and you treat at Network and ThetaCare, you have plenty of providers to pick from to be at the tier-one plan. Over here, your tier-one plan is Network Health Plan, and if you treat outside a Network Health Plan, the plan gets very expensive for you. So sometimes people really like it, it's based on your location and it can provide that stability for small employers, but it used to be the ETF plan went up 5% every year. And that was better than what people were seeing on a fully insured plan. That's not what happened the last three years, they have seen double-digit increases. All I'm showing up there for the two years is that surcharge and that surcharge would fall off. So the surcharge I have at just under $800,000 would be for the first year, that would drop down to about $400,000 year two, and then that $400,000 would go away for year three.
But there still could be an increase on top of that.
Correct.
And you're, and you're basing this off the max increase, surcharge, you know, you're basing it, it couldn't, it could potentially be lower.
Correct.
But unlikely because we did go through this without the claims that we have now, we had less claims and it was 100%.
Yeah.
But it still doesn't hurt to check it, I mean.
Well, it's $3,000.
It's $3,000.
Okay, that one is $3,000 to check it.
Just to get the quote from them.
Alderman, Decker.
If we were to go self-insured, how much would we have to have set aside and at what time? And then secondly, how would we fund it?
Okay, so I, I will not answer the how you will fund it question, but I would tell you how much you would have really is a little bit dependent upon your risk tolerance, but I would say three months would be about 25%, right, of claims. So if you had a bad year, Taylor talked about 125% would be where your aggregate stop loss is at, three months would cover that 25%. Now, that's a lot. Some municipalities might say, well, I don't feel I really need a full three months, maybe like I want to have two months or a month and a half, right? So it really is kind of like from a financial risk, how much you want to take, but three months reserve should be adequate for you.
Three, no, so you got to remember, so 600 grand of the 2.3 million's fixed expense, so take that out, so you're at 1.7. It's 25% worth, call it 25% of the 1.7 million, so $400,000 and some change. The other thing I think to take into note is when you move self-insured, you kind of get a month and a half built up for free because in healthcare, whenever you have a medical claim, if I go to a hospital or go to a clinic today, the bill doesn't come through for 30 to 45 days, 45 is the average. And so you kind of get a month and a half of reserve for free, if you will, because you aren't going to pay, it's due at some point, right? But it's sitting, like, you're going to have the cash flow from it. And so that helps what we have a lot of groups when they move self-insured is you budget the full 2.3 million, you budget for the cash flow, but you're going to get a month and a half of free cash flow, right?
And we can, we can put 300,000.
We, there, there's ways we can fund it, I'm not prepared to tell you what it is.
Right, right, but I'm just saying in general.
I think Jenny would kill me if I had her come up here and come up with an answer now.
No, no, it's fine.
We do have, we do have cash reserves and we could do that.
Yeah, so basically, the self-insurance fund is funded through premium that both the employee and the city pay. So right now, we pay that premium to our fully insured carrier, but when you're under, you know, self-insured plan, you would pay that to yourself into this self-insurance fund and that's how you build up the fund.
So basically, instead of a premium, it's just a funding rate and you use that funding rate to kind of like, right, as Kate said, similar to what you're doing with your premium. Okay? All right, questions on those three options that we went through?
No, just wondering when you would be able to get back to us with numbers on, or when we could have a discussion about tweaking that fully insured?
Well, let her get through this and then we'll talk about next steps.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so the next thing I want to talk a little bit about is what we do regardless of what program you are with, whether you're self-funded or fully insured, we look at an upside-down pyramid in terms of how to help you contain costs. The most impactful would be to transfer the risk. So what do I mean by that? Is if you don't insure the people, right, they can't cost you anything. So doing a cash opt-out, having like incentives to have employees maybe go to an alternative health insurance plan are ways to transfer that risk off of your plan and those strategies then can kind of help you contain the costs. What we like to look at, and I'm going to give you an example of a couple of those, we like to look at win-win strategies. I worked for public sector for years. I negotiated initially with 15 different unions. Employees don't want to have those costs pushed to them and they, when you have increases and employees are paying a percentage of that, they also pay more for that insurance, right? So we look for things that are going to benefit the employee while also benefiting the employer in terms of how to contain your costs. Kind of in the middle, improving the risk, the next bucket would be improving risks. So you have members with chronic conditions, let's say they're a diabetic. The best way to control those costs is to make sure your diabetic is compliant with the care that is appropriate for being a diabetic. They're taking their medications, they're getting their A1C checked, they're doing all the things that are recommended, right? You want to keep someone, especially someone that has a chronic condition, you want to improve that risk because we know that if a diabetic doesn't manage the diabetes, it can go very badly for the employee and the member and it can also be very expensive for the plan. Some of the strategies in the middle are strategies that we would look at if you were self-funded. We have more of the ability to do things that can help you control those claims. And in the bottom layer really is cost share. And that's how do you divide up the bill and the premium and the plan design of what the employee pays and what the employer pays? That is like the least impactful, however, I have that highlighted here because your plan is so generous that people aren't going to want to leave your plan for a risk transfer strategy if it's too generous. So sometimes it's tweaking that in combination with putting other things in place that create the incentive for employees to look at other options other than just the city's plan. So those are some strategies that we would talk about and that we talk about every year with Kate and the mayor about how can we, what can we do? And to your point about what can we do, last year, the city made the decision to eliminate out of network care under the program. You had very few employees, it was very minuscule that anyone was using out of network providers. And by eliminating that, that saved 1% on the renewal and brought it down from nine and a half to eight and a half. So every year, we do look at proactively, what are some of those strategies that we could look at that can help the city contain those costs? I want to show you another, okay, so I want to show you one other thing before I talk about a couple of what those strategies are. And this is a medical plan benchmark. And this compares your current plan, the current plan design in comparison with Mercer PPO plans and with our book of business for state and local government across the nation. What I really will draw your attention to is the actuarial value with ceding. What that means is how rich your plan is. And the reason I say with ceding is because the city is funding some of that HRA to help the employees buy down the deductible. So while the deductible on this grid looks like you have a 3,000, 6,000 deductible, in reality, the employee only has a 250 or a $500 deductible because you're ceding it with that HRA. So your plan is at a 90, just shy of 96% actuarial value plan. That's how rich your plan is in comparison to 89% and 88%. That means your plan is six to seven percent more generous than those benchmark plans. Right, we talked about in one of the first slides, right? Being riches, being a richer plan isn't necessarily a bad thing, but it does come at a cost. And in your case, just aligning to public sector benchmark, that's about a $400,000 cost. Okay? What I, I talk about this slide a little bit is if I said to you, you want to buy a new TV and I give you a gold credit card, go shopping and I don't care what TV you buy, I don't care how much it costs, just send me the bill, I'll pay you the credit card bill for you, right? Every one of us in this room would buy a different TV than we would if we were paying the bill, right? It's just like, just what we would do. We would shop differently if somebody, if my husband gives me his credit card and says, go shopping, don't care how much you spend, darn straight, I'm spending a whole lot more than I would if I had to pay that bill, right? So same thing happens in healthcare. When you have a generous plan and at an over 90% AV, your plan is considered a platinum level plan. So 80% would probably be in that next category of gold, 70% silver, 60% actuarial value would be the bronze level plan. You have a platinum level plan and so you can see when you have a richer plan, the average spend is higher than if the plan is less rich. So at a platinum level, the plan is about 68, 68 versus 64, 11 at a gold, 6,079 or 56, 44 to bronze. It's the concept of the gold credit card. If employees don't have much skin in the game, they're going to shop very differently than they would if they had to pay a little bit more of that cost. The emergency room example that I talked about before is a good example. If employees don't really care, I think under your plan, they have a $250 copay is what they pay if they go to the ER. The ER is expensive, a lot more expensive than urgent care or going to your primary care physician. But if I only have to pay $250, I might say, oh, well, I'm not paying the bill. And I used to talk to my union groups about this and they would say, not our problem, Sandy, if health insurance goes up, that's yours and the mayor's problem in finance to figure out how you're going to pay for it. But I said, well, it is kind of your problem because I and the carrier and my broker partner, right, no matter what we do, we can't control this spend. It takes every one of you being a good healthcare consumer. And if you're not and the costs go up, you're all going to pay more for it out of your paycheck. And mostly, some of you need this plan when you retire. And so if you think the premiums are expensive now, if we don't control costs, how much you think you're going to pay for the plan that you need at retirement until you're eligible for Medicare? You need to help control these costs, you need to make better decisions. And so you have to be a part of this because if you're not, there's only so much we can do as the administrators to really kind of control those costs. So there is a connection to how much spend you will see based on how generous your plan So I talked a little bit about some of the strategies that we like to look for, our win-win strategies. And this is a sample of a different type of opt out. Rather than giving people cash to not take your plan, this is a plan where we say to you, I say, Kate, if you and your husband and two children go on your spouse's plan and leave the city's plan, we will give you $50 per member per month, so a family of four, $200 a month to offset the cost of your spouse's plan. And the city will set up a health reimbursement expense account for you and will cover your out of pocket expenses under that other employer's plan. You might say, well, why would Kate do that? Well, Kate would do that because she might say, okay, maybe I have to pay $100 more even with the 200 payroll bonus you give me. I might have to pay a little more to be on my spouse's plan, but I never have to worry about a medical bill, the city's going to cover that for me. They're going to reimburse my deductible expenses, copayments, coinsurance, whatever it is, under my husband's plan. That's a pretty good deal. Why would the city do it? Because that's a lot less expensive than paying a fully insured and premium for Kate and her husband and two kids to be on your plan. So it's a different kind of opt out and it creates more of an incentive for employee to consider the spouse's plan by removing some of the barriers why maybe they wouldn't take that plan currently. It's a strategy that I like because it takes care Kate and her family, but it also saves the city money. Okay? So that's a type of win-win strategy that we like to look at to offer for employees and employers. Another sample strategy is something called the Samaritan Fund Program. And this typically comes into play if you do have someone that incurs higher cost claims. And this is a charitable fund program that employee can reach out because it's HIPAA protected, employee has to reach out, they have to sign a HIPAA form. And then someone from the Good Samaritan will connect with them and see if they can provide alternative insurance that will meet the employee's need. It can give the employee some relief because maybe it's not, they don't have to worry about the out of pocket expense that they have now and they don't have to pay as much for it. And so the Samaritan Fund will look to find a solution that meets that and then you may have a higher cost claimant that might choose to leave your plan and go to the Samaritan Fund. So these are kind of strategies that we look for, that we can try to do. But in both of these strategy examples that I talked about, if you have a really generous plan and I don't pay that much for it and I only have a $250 deductible, there's not a lot of incentive for me to look at anything else because I got it pretty good here. So sometimes that's why I say you got to like make the plan maybe a little bit less generous too, but also try to replace it that employees then have a different option. All right. You guys are probably tired of me talking, so I'm done and I'm ready for any questions that you have still.
With that Samaritan plan that you were just talking about, I, I think you guys had said that under our current plan, they're paying 95% and the people are only paying five, is that correct? So the Samaritan plan, really, I mean, is that something that would even be helpful?
The employees get 100% covered health plan, no premium or out of pocket expenses.
And that would be for their medications and everything?
Correct.
Okay. Do, do you know if there's a lot of success with people being approved for that or?
Yeah, so I think it depends on the condition, it depends on the individual applying. And so what happens is we try to keep people out of it from like, say, the committee or any, you know, the mayor or Kate. So what, what ends up happening is we roll it out to everybody. So we say, the Good Samaritan Fund is available to all employees, apply. And so depending when they go through the application process, they will ask, you know, your family, what's, what's the condition, who's the member that's affected, you know, background of the family. And then depending on the circumstances, if they can source charitable funds, depending on the condition you have, that's really the qualifier. Some conditions aren't going to qualify where they can't, they can't find funding. But we've had a lot of success finding funding for people. And I'd say the biggest thing for people on here is not only are they going to save their out of pocket, which maybe isn't that significant, just given how generous your guys' plan is, but they are going to save all their premium too. So if you're a family, you know, it's a sizable premium.
Okay, so they wouldn't have the monthly premium either?
Correct.
Okay, that's nice.
So we've had, we've had a lot of success. I mean, I just had a client last week, we moved a, as a family and the child had cystic fibrosis, you know, 12 year old kid. And it's a large, obviously a large expense for the family and they didn't have as generous of a program as you guys, you know, 6,000 bucks. And then the Good Samaritan also, for that family, the other thing they did is they actually, the family had medical debt from prior years and they were able to wipe the medical debt.
So is that something that you guys reach out to the employee, particular employee? Or how, how does that initiate?
We educate, so we educate all employees and they have to voluntarily call or send a note into the Good Samaritan Fund and then sign a HIPAA release form.
Gotcha.
So that way they can talk to one another about their PHI.
Sure.
But we try to stay out of it, Kate tries to stay out, mayor stays out of it and the goal is it's a voluntary resource for employees to engage with.
But all the employees are educated about it at some point every year? Is that re, redone every year?
Yep, yeah, it's reeducated, it's just one of those things that we would keep continually educating on.
Okay. Thank you.
Question?
Thank you. All right.
Any other questions about what we've talked about so far? Alderman, Decker, you look like you're ready to jump on and say something.
The Samaritan Fund is, is, is only available in conjunction with the self-funding insurance option? Is that correct or no?
No, you could actually, you can roll it out with the fully insured program. So the costs, so there's, there's an element to this that's really important, is it's typically only utilized by self insured employers. And the reason for it is that they have the advocacy company that helps go solicit the funds. For every member that they assist, and this isn't the charitable organization, that's through the, the 501(c)(3), it is the for-profit company that helps administer and helps find the funds, charges $50,000 a person that they help solicit the funds for. And so because it is a big, I'd say it's a big lift to go and find funding for these things, they find the funding from charitable organizations, they also get nonprofit hospitals to use their charity care programs to pay for the bills. But it's a $50,000 expense. So if you're fully insured and you go pay the premium for the individual, you know, you're paying maybe a couple thousand dollars, you know, the $50,000 expense is larger than what that individual might cost the city. And so most companies that are fully insured do not roll out these programs because of the cost. Because what you're doing is you are sponsoring as the city, you are sponsoring the payments to the advocacy company that is helping solicit the funds. And you pay it only when people migrate off the health plan.
What do you guys want to do for next steps? I mean, obviously they're here to work with us, so what would you guys like to see next to help you guys make a good decision? Alderman, Trater has already stated she'd like to see some options for plan adjustments. I think that's, that's prudent and I think, you know, whatever you do on the fully insured, we look on the self insured, same things and see how that's going to affect it. Is there anything else besides that?
I think the other thing that we would bring in October, not to speak for it, is you guys, we would also put the max costs on all the options. So we talked about it a little bit today, like self insured, the expected 2.3 million. We would also add a line of what is the worst case scenario, what's the expected and what's bad year, what's a good year, just so you guys would have some semblance. Obviously, you're fully insured, they're all the same number. If you're self insured, I think it's good for you guys just to see the variance, but it would still look favorable, I think, to the fully insured side, so.
Would having them come forward with that information, you just said October, would you be ready to make a decision in October or do we want to have them come in September with those options so we can make a decision in October?
Yeah, I think we need it in September to have some time to digest it all.
I would say the sooner the better. If we're going to do any options so they can do their job.
Does that work for you?
I think what we could do, guys, that would be, so again, the stop loss, you aren't going to get initial numbers until October timeframe, just with the size of your guys' organization.
That's the sign on the line part.
But I think what we would do with the stop loss is we could show you, this is what we get if we get market rate, here's what if we get it at, you know, 25% higher, 50% higher. And you guys, we can kind of say, hey, we are good self funding so long as the stop loss insurance is less than this number. That, I think we can get that accomplished in September because in October, then we'll actually know what the stop loss number is going to be, so.
What about the plan adjustments that we want?
Oh, we can get that done in a week.
That's what I figured. Okay, so we can, we can set maybe, you know, the first or second, or the third, I'm sorry, second or fourth week of September?
Any of that, those hypothetical scenarios I just talked about with the hypothetical stop loss and the plan modeling of the alternates, we could do that in very short order.
And I would like to request for the second week in September?
I'm looking at the thing right now.
And would you prefer to have that conversation about
No.
The plan adjustments before you guys delve into the modeling?
No.
Or, okay.
I will say, there is a timing issue if you are looking at the ETF plan, mayor, I think you know this as well, you got to get the underwriting done and I believe you have to have a resolution into ETF prior to October 1. I believe they need 90 days in order for you to do that. So I don't know that that realistically is an option you want to explore, but there is more of a critical timing issue on that option.
Yeah, I think we can do the September one. We may have to do some adjustments to our budget calendar, we'll look at that, but we can make it work for that in September.
Rick, why don't we leave it open that, that if you look at this, we can maybe do a special session if we need to?
Yeah.
Just coming on a Wednesday or something?
I agree, but I think we can get it for that, that first meeting in September.
Okay.
Just got one last question, just so I'm clear. So all the numbers you gave us today, that doesn't, that doesn't account for, say, any formulary changes or plan adjustments to like align with benchmarks or anything like that?
Correct.
None of that's in there?
Correct.
If you do come up with anything else you want to see, try to get that to us in the next, I would say, week because we're giving them, you know.
Should we get it to Kate if we have any other questions?
Yeah, Kate or myself, sign. Do you guys have anything, questions for your marching orders?
No. Are your heads spinning yet though?
The what?
Are your heads spinning yet though?
Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Want to read the notice of closed session?
Following conclusion of consideration of the above portion of its regularly scheduled agenda, the committee of the whole will meet to grant a motion to convene closed session for discussion, action relative to discussion regarding innovation grant and how it may impact the police department, abatement procedure for nuisance properties, discussion regarding businesses that have failed to return their annual survey to assist the city in determining rec use and charges in accordance with section 290-7, sub G, sub 3 of the municipal code, and to take such further action as may be appropriate with respect to such matters. A closed session for the above purpose is authorized pursuant to the provisions of, with stat, section 19.85, sub 1, sub G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved and, with stat, section 19.85, sub 1, sub C, considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction of or exercises responsibility. Upon conclusion of the closed session, the common council will reconvene in open session to consider its public agenda, including motions to recommend approval or rejection of the above listed deliberations or any of the public agenda items that have not been acted upon.
Motion?
Yeah, motion?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make it.
Second?
Roll call vote.
Other person Wolf?
Yes, and then a break.
Other person Hamel?
Yes.
Other person Decker?
Yes.
Other person Bryce?
Yes.
Other person Schrader?
Yes.
Other person Dilghi?
Yes.
Other person Madden?
Yes.
Thank you, we will, we are in closed session. We will only be coming back into open session for the purposes of adjournment, there will be no other business tonight. Everyone have a great night and see you.